Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Brookline Select Board Meeting.
Present in the room are Selectmen Samara Swick, Paul Madalinsky, Stan Noga, Bruce Mello, and myself, Dot Maggio. Also present is our reporting clerk, Vanessa Ballou, our Highway Supervisor, Everett Mountbills, resident Ex-Board Mayor, Mike DiSocio, and Marie Tadassol, and our municipal technical assistance person, Maggie Bowley, correct?
Maggie Bowley.
Maggie Bowley, who will be sharing some time with us this evening. Thank you very much. Are there any changes at this time to the agenda?
It buried my agenda. Yeah, let me look at yours. The only thing I can think of is town planning, if there are any reports from Energy Committee and Town Planning Committee, we haven't, we haven't. We haven't met for a while.
Right, we just, one comes up, we skip.
It's tabled.
So there's no Planning Commission and there's no Energy Committee.
Yeah.
Any other changes to the agenda?
So we're tabling B and C off number eight.
Yes. Okay, members of the public, scheduled member Maggie Bowley for our Municipal Technical Assistance Programs through Windham Regional Commission, and Maggie has sent to us some summaries from her working with the committee. I was not at that meeting, but.
Does anybody?
Does anybody want a copy? They don't have one.
The summary of.
The needs assessment.
The needs assessment that we did. There's sort of a overview and then a list of possible projects.
Yeah. And so. Yeah, go ahead.
I had a great time visiting in November. Well, I'm glad I made my first trip here when it was light out.
Yeah.
Here for the dark trip tonight. And what I prepared was a summary narrative of kind of the strengths and challenges of the town. That's really just a contextual document. There's not much of anything to do with that right now, but I hope it is helpful for you all, especially those that could not be at the meeting to hear what was discussed. And from there, we have a list of projects that the group brainstormed. I think this is valuable in reflecting community input, what is on people's minds in terms of what Brookline can and should be doing. And from there, I would love the town to start thinking about those projects on the brainstorm list and helping shape and refine and prioritize them as the next step. My next step in my work is to look at the projects that you've prioritized and start matching them with potential funding sources. And so when you see the projects brainstormed, you can see that a lot of them are very preliminary ideas to some more advanced ideas that have shape. And what I want to do as a next step is hear from you all, what catches your eye there in terms of priorities? If there's things that the town has been talking about over many years? If there's, you know, a project that it feels like it might be appropriate to try to secure some funding, or if there's a project that's ready for implementation, then I start to hear from the town based on what we gathered from community members, what the priorities might be. And I recognize that we have really limited time tonight, and I recognize that's been a really busy time of year for a lot of you. And so I am happy to start hearing your thoughts tonight and know that that conversation might need to continue, or to just make a plan for how we want to do that prioritizing work together.
Well, that's what I just wrote down at the very end. Do we, how does the board want to collaborate on the priorities? We have a long meeting tonight. I don't know if you wanted to have a separate meeting, a daytime meeting, or another community-based meeting? What would, what's your pleasure?
What timeframe do we have to play with in making that kind of a decision? I mean, I know you met yesterday maybe with the LCT?
I have not known the LCT on your projects because I actually wanted to get a little bit more shape from them so that they would have a little bit more of a defined list. They are going to be a partner in the research for funding. Katie and her partner Bonnie, if there are some really creative thinking about funding, somebody use that as a resource. The timing, Stan, frankly, it's gone back and forth a little bit. When I, when I first signed up this project, my understanding was the needs assessment needed to be done, should be done the fourth quarter of this year, and then the opportunity assessment matching for funding could happen in the first quarter of next year.
Right.
Two weeks ago, when I kind of pushed again on this agenda, we had heard that you should really have your projects defined by about today, you know, like towards the end of December. And since then, that has again shifted to, oh, that's okay, there's flexibility in terms of the projects you're defining. So I, I'm, I'm following, but there is a shifting landscape. And so I'm just looking to move things along at a pace that we can all work comfortably and trust that we will align with deadlines eventually. They are considering extending MTAP funding, I think through the end of 2026, that already is through the end of 2025. So we're certainly early in the process. My work can continue. You know, I don't want a grant opportunity to come up in two weeks and feel like if we had moved a little quicker, you guys might have been prepared to submit an application, or I would have been prepared to submit an application on your behalf. I don't want to miss any opportunities. That said, I really recognize that this year and time has been challenging. We've been doing a lot of hazard mitigation work, so I don't want to rush anybody either.
Well, I mean, I can see someone looking at policy development for enriched vehicle, and if that's on the list, that, that's not a difficult project, but planning to take out the curb on a road or doing the bicycle, you know, sort of right in that head.
And certainly that list includes ideas that will need funding and some ideas that just need community collaboration to make them happen that are kind of outside a little bit of what we'll be pursuing. And so that's a, that's a sorting project in and of itself, a priority as a project there too.
Well, there was a survey that was sent around by V L C T late last week, I believe, and I did fill it in, and I did express the fact that the timing of this was difficult because it's at the end of the year. A year, we had another disaster. It's coming time for budget. It's coming time for town meeting, and town, town booklets are going to be put together, and the planning's got to go together, the committees, the audit, all those things. I said, I'm pinching on it, and I said, it's, it's too bad that there couldn't be more flexibility. I'm glad to hear that you're getting some indication that there can be. I'm wondering if, it's probably going to take several days at least. I was hopeful that maybe we could have a special meeting sometime next week to go over any unfinished budget, but it is Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's, and we can make a party out of it, you know? That's just a positive thought. No, so, you know, if, if we, you know, to me, it looks like at this point, maybe the first whole week at the end, and January might be a time to get back to with more definitive things. But on the other hand, if something that comes across your desk says as immediate response, I think that we ought to have flexibility to jump on that and give you some guidance so that we don't miss out on something big. And maybe we all got to be flexible at this point, maybe? I don't know how that sounds.
I'm thinking if I, yes, I, I, the flexibility is important. I'm thinking if I do schedule a 10-minute period, if everybody does their research, reads through, understands that, comes up with some ideas, I can put a 10 or 15-minute section in the January 3 meeting. But again, we're working on town, we, you know, trying to get the town report out. That, that's the, that's the issue. So I don't want to, I don't want to take away next week. I mean, I don't know.
Should we also consider, like, you know, like Dan was at the meeting and he's online.
Right.
You know, and Marie's here, you know, Chuck was at the meeting. You were, you were on it.
He was, I was not.
Yeah, you were on it, yeah. But I'm thinking, you know, we should maybe set a tentative date and see what others can join for, and probably a little later than January 3 in terms of.
We could do it on the weekend of the 6th, a weekend, or Friday the 5th.
I'm completely flexible. Whatever.
Yeah, I don't remember what I'm.
But right now you're talking about the idea of a special meeting not being on the agenda, just especially.
Well, I'm putting on the agenda too, on the 3rd. I can put some time on the agenda just to pull up.
See if select.
But I do like the idea of a, a special meeting in that I think there's a fair amount of substantive discussion that can happen if we, if people could make the time for it. You know, there's a lot of ideas there, and it will take some conversation to have them take shape a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that there, one of the big things on there was the meeting house. So I think that would definitely be cool. We should, we should talk to, and I know I, I'm, we'll stand in there on our planning mission, and I thought, I've, I've had people express interest, and can we see what some of these, these ideas that came up were, you know, so.
Yeah, so I'm going to put a, I'm going to put a flexible 10 minutes on the January 3 agenda for us to be prepared to solidify. And then possibly have a special meeting on the 5th.
The 5th is.
It's a Friday. I don't know, was, is, is there a weekday or a weekend or better for this?
You know what, Doc? Just in case of budget, why don't you push the special meeting back to one, one more Friday on the 12th?
Okay.
On 12.
On the 12, you want it on the special meeting for?
Just, you know.
It would be a select board meeting? No, it would be a municipal technical assistance program meeting.
Yeah, a special technical assistance program.
To invite the public back in to, to have, make sure that they reviewed over this and to pick our.
Pick our Friday, January 11.
Yeah. I think, yeah, because I just know how things can happen with the project.
Friday.
What time on Friday?
Do we want to do it earlier, like 4?
4.
Or 3 in the afternoon?
3 is.
I can attend anytime on Friday the 11th.
A what meeting?
For me, would a daytime meeting be better, like at 10 o'clock?
Anything's fine, Doc.
Dan Towler, can you hear me, Daniel? Push your microphone.
Yes, I can hear you.
Would you be interested in joining a, like a 10 o'clock meeting on Friday, the 12th of January to, to pinpoint the, how the municipal technical assistance program can work based upon the most recent assessment? Would you be interested in, in a daytime meeting?
Yeah, I guess I could do that.
Okay, very good. So we're going to do a tentative lead on the 12th at 10 o'clock.
Yes, two more questions. Yes, more questions. I'm running out of time. As we move towards that, there's a few things that slide for me of the ideas that I want to bring to in case they're going to move that in meetings. There is a distinct chance, I want to make sure not to get people's hopes up, but that the MTAP program could start considering planning, additional plant funding for planning projects beyond my work. And what I have seen in other towns, it's interest in flood resilience, hydrology studies, work that has come up on your list of priorities. And if that opportunity opens up. Anticipate. Yeah, I anticipate a lot of towns will want to move, and I would want to move quickly for you. And so I did see that interest in looking at flooding and topography and thought that that might be, that might be a project to pull together more quickly if, if that opportunity opened up. In addition, I've heard a lot of interest and discussion around shared services, which was a real emphasis of the conversation here, including additional administrative capacity shared between towns. There's some interest from the LCT in looking for towns to pilot, pilot shared administrative capacity between towns. And I thought I'd heard that Brookline might be interested in, in that as well. And I know from the, from very interest, because I have those conversations, I will see if there's a place to call it, sees not. So I, I understood those correctly, that.
Those are two big priorities.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought I understood that priorities.
Who, who would you call your point person here in Brookline?
I have point people.
Point people.
I, Brookline is very.
Two point people would just stand.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so what you're saying is if there's a chance to accelerate, do it.
Yeah, stick with your point people, and then they'll go communicate, actually, to the rest of us.
Right.
All right?
I got, yes.
In addition to the hydraulic studies, if you heard of any funding for engineering studies for culverts and self-organic, funding is available for that, that would be just equally as important.
Yeah, I mean, I've been warned many ways not.
Promising.
Sound optimism, yes. So I, but I just want, but I also need to know what your priorities are in case that becomes a thing we can look into. I will.
Their, their engineering studies themselves are $50,000, $60,000. It's very expensive.
One, one other question, if I may. When you were here, there were a number of topics that had a lot of activity around them and then those that were less. So is, did you look at any statistical analysis of how much of what the individuals here?
First, we're up over there and climate resilience. I didn't do a statistical analysis of that partly because we had, there was significant overlap, as you know, with the projects. And so it wasn't really, and some of them were, I don't want to say miscategorized, but could be categorized in a few different ways. And so if you see this project list, it actually does not have five MTAP categories. If you end up identifying, let's say, your top three to seven, three to 10 priorities, I will create a spreadsheet. You will see what MTAP category they're in, which was the climate resilience and community development, water and wastewater. Certainly, you have a lot of visually remembering on community development and also workforce development and community resilience, as one was called. I am hearing that as much as projects can be framed in terms of resilience, that is getting a lot more mileage developed. So I will be sure to frame that.
Thank you.
Anybody else who might.
Awesome. I'll hold that Friday. It's great.
Thank you. Have a safe, good back home.
Thank you.
All right, yeah.
Take care, everybody.
Well, I put the lights on, so it'll be a little brighter. When I walk in.
You're safer on the street.
Are there any unscheduled members of the agenda items, Marie? And Daniel, do you have anything else besides any particular thing you'd like to share? Or are you just here to follow along with our agendas?
No, I was just here to follow along. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Tanza, are you here for a particular agenda item, or are you here for our budgeting?
I'm here for the budgeting.
Perfect. All right. At this time, then, we shall move to the review of the minutes, review and adopt the final minutes from the December 6 regular meeting. We'll start with that one first. We have five pages. Any changes or edits from page 1 of 5?
Why does it say December 13th?
Well, because we had two meetings, December 6 and December 13.
Sorry, I have the wrong, I have one and not the others.
Oh, okay.
The 13th.
Any changes to page 2 or 5?
No, but I just wanted to answer a question about D. Are we all set with the, with the portal for that 21 storm?
I can answer that. As of today, yes. Except Saturday morning, Melissa and I are going to get together and double check some stuff on the Putty Mountain thing, but it's all, every, every document is updated.
Okay, that's all that happens there.
That's a lot of work. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank Melissa.
Any reviewed items from page 3 of 5?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Number 10, number 3.
10, 3, calls remountain power.
Rather wrong. Page 3?
Page 3 of 5.
Reports and updates.
10A3, remountain power.
10A3, remountain power.
Am I doing the wrong agenda? Am I doing the wrong minutes? You're doing 6 this week?
Yes, we're doing 6.
How do I screw that up?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
This is page 3. It says new business budget planning, warrant orders, reports and updates.
I'm sorry.
Page 3.
He's on the 13th, that's the head page.
You want to switch around?
You must have.
Okay, never mind for now, yes.
You want an extra one, one that's compiled? Would that help?
That's okay. I'll follow along if I find him.
Page 4 of 5. I have one edit, and it's probably because I put it wrong in the agenda. It's down in number 11A, number 4. The website address is www.brooklinevt.com. I, I know I put it on the agenda wrong.
Yes, I have. Excuse me?
No, W, it's www.brooklinevt.com.
Excuse me? Back to page 3, reports and updates. Now I have, what's wrong with, what do I have wrong?
Highway Supervisor, Excavator.
It's not a big deal. It's just number 2. Mark's abbreviated name as well, so that's what.
Oh, yes, Everett Mark Bills, B.
I asked that. Okay, so, I wasn't brain dead when I did this.
Any changes or edits from page 5 of 5? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, December 6 with, with the additions and changes. So noted. I have a second.
Okay.
Seconded by Bruce. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as edited for Wednesday, December 6, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to take a look at the minutes from the special select board meeting from Wednesday, December 13, 2023. There were three pages. Does anybody have any edits or comments for page 1 of 3? I did not. Anybody have any changes or edits for page 2 of 3? Bruce?
On the appropriations, D, shouldn't that be all the way, the last sentence, not SEVDS, appropriation of 1590 for the summer, where we put the, 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 and 550 was approved at the 2023?
SEVDS.
That's not SEVDS, it's SEVDS.
Right, you're correct. I'll give you the correct name. The appropriation request for $1,590 was through the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, SEVDS, S E V E D S, Advancing Southern Lamont. And that was.
No, it was.
Brattleboro Development.
Oh, you got it, you got it.
Thank you for catching. I didn't catch that.
Yeah.
Any other changes on page 2 of 3? Changes on page 3 of 3? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, December 13, special select board meeting as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Noga. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next is warrant orders. I'd like to make a motion to approve the payroll warrant number 2424 dated 12/20/23 in the amount of $13,452.1. May I have a second? Seconded by Samara. Any discussion?
It was printed on the 15th. You said dated 12/20.
But it's, the date on the warrant itself is the 20th, today's date.
Okay, all right.
Right, it was.
I get you. All right, sure.
So.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the payroll warrant 2024, 2424 dated 12/20/23 in the amount of $13,452.1, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? All right, I'll pass it around. You need to sign. All that's going around. I'd like to make a motion through accounts payable warrant 2425 dated December 20, 2023 in the amount of $18,723.23. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion?
What happened with the Coda and Coda and the school? Is that something that has been carried forward from the past, or is this new?
No, it's a, they're yearly contracts.
That's the yearly contract for Brookline. The $125 service call, what all charge was paid. If that's what you're.
That was the last time.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2425 for $18,723.23, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any intentions? All right, I'll pass this around. You need to sign. While you're doing that signature, I can take a look at the bids for the arborist work, the RFP. We, I received one bid only from an arborist. Mark, you had how many inquiries?
Just 3.
3 inquiries. Only one bid came in. I have the copy of the advertisement, the actual bid. So I did print it out, but I didn't read it. Hang on. Okay, all right. The bid for the Hazard Tree Removal in the Town of Brookline, there was one quote, number 2165, submitted by Carr, Tree &amp; Timber on December 18 by Henry Carr, an ISA certified arborist. The tree removal project, he has a scope of work which includes, I'll pass this around, stumping, felling trees, chipping brush, leaving wood roadside, breaking and blowing time and basis material. One, I'm going to start with one day of work, complete work by the priority asked for Mark Bills. Additional time may be added by written requests from the town. Additional written quote will be provided only if it's required by the town or if the scope of work changes. It's going to include a tree crew, an arborist, a climber, a bucket truck, log debris truck, large shifter with a winch, chipper dump truck, skid steer with grapple and buckle, all necessary tools, riggings, fuels, Bluetooth helmet communications for crew, and any disposal fees. All tree work will be done in accordance with the ANSI performance standards to provide two certified flaggers and signed packages for the road as required by law for the duration of their project and the total package price. It's $3,000 for the tree work, eight hours worth of flagging, two certified flaggers for another additional $800. So the total bid is for $3,800, and the bid did come with a quote, certificate of liability, and a W9 form. I'm going to pass this around. If you want to take a look at it, when it comes back to me, I'll make a motion.
So that was the only bid?
That was the only bid.
Did they come and take a look at the trees?
They did. They called, made an appointment to, well, look, and I had them all flagged, and he asked us questions, and I.
How many treats? Just out of curiosity, I couldn't remember.
10. If this guy, I mean, I, I told him, I showed him others if he has time, so. He felt the animal taking the bulk of the day.
So what about the ones, the other ones? I mean.
It'll be, he'll do what he can in an eight-hour day, and then I'll make arrangements depending on what the board wants to spend. Like I say, there's hundreds of trees that are evolving into the same category day after day. So if we do one day at 3,800, and the town wants to spend another day, I can spend up another few trees. You know, I showed him, if he gets those done, his tree near the locations that need removal as well. So, you know, in the meantime, if we have something that's emergency, you, you'll.
Yeah, he is a preferred, then we call it an emergency work. We have that.
But, you know, it's, basically, the, the ones I showed him were the ones I. basically the 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 ones I showed him are the ones that I have written off in and where the most hazardous ones that that I could locate.
And he said that he would do in the cover email, uh, so that he would get them done in January and February, which is
Yeah.
Looks solid.
Could I just ask a question, Dot? Uh, I noticed that Mark has taken a lot of trees down behind Su- uh, Suzie's little peanuts. Uh, is it something that he can do some of that work himself?
If he could, he would, but he can't. Not out, not the hazard trees that are uh, that he's picked up. Those are trees he can't do.
Okay, thank you.
As part of my job, that's, I go around town and keeping an eye on if there's any that I can remove. I do that on a regular basis. And these are some that are more of a challenge, uh, more dangerous, so therefore we're calling in the specialists.
Right. Yes, Marie.
Chuck and I had some work done by Call three a few months ago on our property owner and mom. They were amazing. Their equipment is so well suited for what they're doing. Their people are well trained, they're hard workers. And it was just a very, very good experience for us and they. Boy, he's good.
Yeah, it looked, but the safety features were something that I was impressed with.
Yeah.
Um, when they were there working in that.
I've also called the Green Mountain Powers is coming to uh, look at a tree that's hovering over uh, power lines in town.
And as, as we all know, that there was a tree that came down, um, this on Monday.
To think about it, we have two ash trees that are within like two feet of major power lines on our we called Green Mountain Power. So if the next time you call them, you can
Alright.
Sign those two. They came and put shots on them, but nobody ever came and got them done.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of the contracted line crews that do all their arborists have gone north week after week for.
Yeah, for variations.
So a lot of these calls uh, are second priority, I guess.
We had several trees along our driveway that were touching electrical wires. And over a five-year period, we had called several times. And uh, just last year, finally, they came. So I don't know what to make of their request or response to requests for tree service. It, you know, that that was very frustrating. When I asked the worker why it took so long, he said, well, we're in this process right now of looking at the circuits of electrical transmission wires. And as we dedicate ourselves to clearing up these kinds of dilemmas per circuit, we go to the next circuit. And that, in your case, it just happened to take that wrong. So I don't know how that fits into spot calls for things. It just, it's puzzling.
Yeah, they they used to use uh, baby tree.
Yeah, let's make a motion. Let's move. Really late.
Seven years cycle.
Yes, yeah. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to appro- to accept the bid from Car Tree and Tom Car Tree and Timber for the total price of thirty-eight hundred dollars for hazard tree removal during the months of January or February here on Brookline. May I have a second? Seconded by Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the uh, bid of thirty-eight hundred dollars for tree work in the town of Brookline signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Shall I give this to you for the contract?
If you'd like, yeah.
Alright.
I know somebody who can do it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Alright, um, I'll email. I'll email uh, Henry Carr and tell him to be expected to hear from us, Mr. Noga, for for that process. Perfect, thank you. Alright, um, now we're down to, you know what, um, I am going to um, just to board Maurice. I I'm gonna switch something in the agenda so that, Marie, if you don't mind, just so we can get you. You know, okay, I'm gonna be, I should have changed this earlier. I'm gonna move the agenda item, uh, number seven A up at this time, if you don't mind. Okay, um, as you all know, the town of Brookline has invested in the C U D with D V fiber. Uh, we were one of the first towns to uh, join up and uh, in order to do so, they ask for representative representation from the different communities. Um, and we have Donald Domaine, who was our D V fiber representative. He asked to be on the alternate side of it because of his workload. And Mrs. Marie Tattersall has asked it, uh, the town, the town if she would accept an appointment as um, our representative to the D V fiber C U D uh, for getting uh, internet access and uh, throughout high, high street internet access through town. We're probably gonna be, Brookline will be in phase three. And they're sort of like, just not quite starting phase two yet, so it's not real evident, but.
Yeah, it's a ways off.
Yes. Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion to, for this board to appoint Marie Tattersall as our representative to the D V fiber uh, uh, C U D uh, at this time. May I have a second? Alright, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Marie, I know you're, you'll serve us well. Thank you so very much. And don't hesitate to contact me or anybody else if you have any. There's a lot of meetings. I don't know. A lot of them resume though. Yes, and they cancel a lot. If there's something that comes up during a meeting that you have a question about, just give me a call. We can talk about it. If it needs to come to the select board, I'll bring it to the select board. But other than that, once in a while, we might ask for a summary or report or a hot. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Marie Tattersall as our representative to the D V fiber signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, Marie. I'll make this in the mail.
Thank you.
Send you a copy. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Alright. You're welcome to stay though, cause I know you like numbers.
Well, I'm hoping to be on the finance committee with uh, D V fiber.
Okay, oh, good. Excellent. They have, they they've accumulated quite a bit of money in their budget, I've noticed, so.
A lot of work to get done.
I know, I know. Well, thank you again. Alright, we're gonna go back to the agenda. Item seven V, budget planning for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Continue with salary review appropriations, general and highway funds. That's clever.
Dot, can I ask you a question? Uh, right from the page one of the budget up on the top where we have uh, um, state per car clerk fees and so forth. Have you, uh, I plugged in some numbers. I don't know if you have any of those numbers on your worksheets.
What numbers did you plug in? I'm sorry.
I plugged in clerk fees for revenue at six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
We haven't done it yet.
Six thousand?
Yes.
This is item uh, clerk fee revenues, which is budgeted for twenty twenty-four, four thousand four hundred.
Right, but we had a, we've had an increase from ten dollars a page to fifteen dollars a page. So that's why there's an increased revenue.
So you're putting in six thousand?
Right, six thousand. I'm considering four hundred pages at fifteen dollars a page.
Does that include the rec- rest, records restoration part?
No, I haven't gotten to that part yet.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Dog license revenue, I've uh, I plugged in four hundred and fifty dollars. I'm considering one hundred do- one hundred dogs plus late fees. Uh, this year, we've only had eighty-nine dogs licensed. We normally have around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five. I'm not sure what's going on there, but I think we've been a little lax in following through. But this year, I think we should get back to pre-COVID and uh, hold people's feet to the fire with penalties, et cetera, et cetera.
So did you say four hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Four hundred and fifty.
Thanks.
Okay.
The town gets four hun- four dollars per dog, plus any late fees, whereas the state gets five dollars per dog. Um, as far as fishing and hunting license, I've plugged in fifteen because most people are doing them online. For each license that we uh, do in the office, we get a dollar fifty. So I've just put fifteen dollars just for the sake of having something. Copy revenue, uh, there's been a downtick in um, in uh, selling of homes and um, you know, examining records. So I've put that in at eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, certainly had to. Okay. What about marriage? Any?
Marriage license I have at seventy-five dollars. Uh, I'm thinking maybe we get five license, uh, which is seems to be what we've done last year.
Uh, the marriage license fee went up quite a bit this year, correct?
Right, but the, the clerk fees did not. The clerk fees did, the clerk fees did go up from ten dollars to fifteen dollars a license, but the license went up to eighty dollars from sixty-five, so.
So seventy-five, you said. Alright.
Yep, um, birth and death certificates revenue, uh, again, that's each certified copy is ten dollars. I'm hoping nobody dies, but uh, unfortunately they do, and I'm figuring maybe ten certified copies at ten dollars apiece, a hundred dollars.
Okay, hey.
And that's pretty much all that I have to uh, offer in, on my end.
That's great. Okay. I do have a question, and I don't know if I should ask Melissa, and this is an hour later. This animal impound revenue of ten dollars versus the money that.
I don't understand that, to be honest with you. Um, I think we need to get a clarification from Wyndham Humane Society because uh, that doesn't seem to make sense. Everything that we do, we're reimbursed by the animal owner.
Yeah, that's just.
Before they can take the dog out.
But we also have somewhere else where there's a seven hundred dollar, we we put on, um, there's a seven, the town was charged by the Humane Society for impound fees of seven hundred dollars.
They do that when the owner can't pay.
When the owner can't pay.
And then you have, and then they have to collect it. I recall that from years back, and then sometimes we'd get a check back from the ant, from Wyndham.
Do you recall that?
When there's a dog that goes in from the town, and then somebody reclaims it, then they send a check back to you guys. You're supposed to.
Alright, so we've only gotten the ten dollars. But last year, they billed us seven hundred dollars because those were people who couldn't afford and.
I think that's like an annual fee that you have to pay.
The contract fee is five hundred dollars.
Five hundred?
Yes, we, we make a donation of five hundred, and then we probably made another contract fee of five hundred dollars, and then there was an extra two hundred dollars. It could be impound fees that people didn't pay.
Maybe that's.
I didn't think you get charged for those.
I thought we did. I thought it happened in the past. Well, we, we, we could look at it. Yeah, alright, um, that was just one thing that I wanted to bring up, but everything else on this income here, we're good. So we're gonna move on to.
The schoolhouse revenue, that was updated based on the contract starting in July first? Cause that number looks different, probably because there was probably an increase.
I have twenty thousand in the schoolhouse revenue.
Schoolhouse revenue, what's a schoolhouse? The daycare.
Isn't that the rent?
Yeah, alright, well, I would call it a schoolhouse. I call it a daycare.
Daycare lease or something.
Well, you can't call it a lease because technically, you you can call it a U S P.
U S P?
You can call it schoolhouse revenue. But technically, you're not allowed to have a lease as a municipality. Okay, so you call it something else.
Bruce, what is the rent going to be in July first?
That's why I brought it up. I didn't know.
But you don't wanna take the full amount of the rent this year. It should be less than the full amount. We should allow, and I thought, Paul, did you come home with this? We have, we pontificated budget, we, 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 we hypothesized that if we should budget twenty thousand.
That's high.
For, because the budget last year, we took all of the revenue and it was twenty-six four. Right? So the rent is going up, right?
Yes.
It was twenty-six four for the, for the lease for the year?
The budget last, for twenty twenty-four, our budget is twenty-six four. So I assume that's based on the, on the lease we've got.
I remember the discussion.
It's not based on next year, cause it goes up.
No, no, but next year it goes up again, so I don't know what it goes up to, cause I didn't, I didn't look it up, but.
What you're saying, Samara, it should be less considering expenses.
Yeah, what I was saying, probably what we should do is put in a number for now, like something like twenty or twenty-one thousand.
You said that you thought that your expenses for that building would be eight thou- seven or eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so then.
So that's what we were asking, if you, if you wanted to stay with that, within that range.
Appears, yes.
That's how you came up with the twenty thousand.
Alyssa, somebody, I think it was you, Melissa, gave me Alyssa expenses.
Daycare building expenses.
I'm not gonna.
Would be in a different fund.
I got the numbers accurate, as what we spent last year.
Yeah.
And consideration of what we, looks like we're gonna spend this year. It changes all the time, but.
Well, there was, there were, last year's expenses, there were heat pumps and things put in.
Yeah, but that wasn't, well, that was in it, but that wasn't really.
But the actual expenses, there's payroll, there's the maintenance, payroll tax, and salary. Count employee labor, that's about a thousand dollars, plus there was a hundred and nineteen dollars in supplies. Wait, no, the fire alarm maintenance was eight, eight eighty-eight. I'm just gonna round.
And water testing.
Then the employee labor was fourteen hundred, so that's twenty, twenty-two hundred, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred, plus water testing, another thousand. That's thirty-four, thirty-five hundred, plus whatever repairs and maintenance you wanna safeguard.
Uh, you said you had thirty-five. What you don't wanna include is the heat pumps, cause that was paid for by our.
I'm not including the heat pumps.
Why would you not put the income from the school lease as a separate item? And the expenses that are incurred for that particular building as a separate line for expenses? Uh, why wouldn't you do that? To me, that would be very, very clear.
The expenses don't get paid by the same fund guy. They're paid out of the school, but there's a separate fund for the school building. So.
Oh, I'm scared.
So, so the idea was to take that revenue and direct it to the administrative, right? Take some of the revenue and direct it toward the administrative overhead, which isn't a horrible idea. You could keep it all in the school fund and do transfer, a transfer in and transfer out.
To keep the revenue in the school building and not budget it and do a transfer in. It doesn't matter. If you're trying to count it against your tax stuff, well, you wanna count that revenue.
Only general fund and transfer what you want into the.
School fund. So you would say, you would, you would, the school fund would be a hundred percent of what the revenue is, and then we.
General fund would be, you take all the rent, and then you'd have your expenses and you just transfer the money all the way that you knew.
What you.
The stuff that's staying in the school fund.
Yep.
Into the general fund so that you know you're getting a hundred percent of it.
Right.
But then, but then you're gonna, you're not gonna raise enough tax if you're, if you're gonna, you're gonna end up. But then, but then you're gonna, you're not gonna raise enough tax if you're, if you're gonna, you're gonna end up with a deficit in the school fund. That you're gonna have to refund it sometime, like this year or anything.
You'd have to put a line item, a transfer out into the school fund, to like an expense line item, transfer to.
You'd have to budget, you'd have to budget to get them.
Right.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, okay, we could do it that way. That makes the most sense. I see why you're saying it that way, because when you're recording the revenues, you record them all in one spot. But as soon as you record it, you create a line item to move some of the rest income to the school fund. That makes sense.
So, is that.
That's.
Make more sense in the way we used to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, before, we kept all the revenue in the school fund.
Right.
Because.
Drew out of it.
Pardon?
And took what I, I just kept it ducking out of the, out of the school fund, whatever revenue, out of the revenue of the school fund. So.
Right.
I spent two thousand dollars on, on water, whatever.
But then we ended up with a huge revenue surplus in that building that we didn't need.
That's true, it was building up.
And so, then we used it to.
Offset taxes.
No, we used it to pay for the excavator. Which.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and so.
Had been built up. So, you're saying that that's not really the best.
So, because we don't need that level of funding in that fund.
Because of the match.
Because, but we do need some money in that fund to cover expenses. It makes sense to put all the revenue in on the top line, and then kind of do, kind of do what Guy is saying, like. Put the, but you don't put the expenses back in on the administrative side, you put it as a transfer to another fund expense. That's what transfers in and out are.
If you, I thought you were trying to cut back on that, but that's fine with me. We'll put the full revenue into.
We'll put the full revenue into the uh, yeah, but it's, it's, it ends up in the same place. Because you're adding an expense line on transfers out to school fund. And it should say specifically, transfer out to.
Or school, whatever you want to say.
To Fund B, or whatever fund, what, transfer to that fund number, that's the cleanest way to do it.
Yep.
So, cash fund is an expense fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what happens is, when you have on the revenue side, if you need two thousand dollars out of the, out of the, out of the lease money. You're doing that transfer.
Yeah, but it's gonna be, yeah, and it'll be budgeted. There'll be like, if we're saying that there's. Say six thousand dollars in expenses that the school is gonna have every year, six, or seven to eight thousand. If we budget seven thousand dollars in expenses for the school.
In that way.
We're gonna put a new line item under expenses.
And every quarter, one-fourth of that, six thousand dollars would be transferred into that.
Done quarterly, it could be done every time she does the rent, you could just do a memorized journal entry, and do it all at once.
Every time you do the rent?
Every time you record the rent, just do it at the same time.
How much you want, though? You're gonna wanna do.
Well, it takes, like, say it's seven thousand dollars and divide it by twelve and move it every month.
Yeah.
Or you could wait till the end of the year and move it at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, what's, what's the number?
Yeah, whatever.
Do you need the number for the rent lease for? I bet it right now.
No, we got it now, go ahead.
On July one of twenty twenty-four.
So, what's the?
More money in expense.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars. Twenty, twenty. Twenty-eight, eight.
Twenty-eight, eight is anticipated.
Eight comma eight zero zero. Eight hundred, okay.
And then, on the expense, new line on expenses will be somewhere here, and it will be. Uh, transfer out to SLP, or transfer out.
Daycare.
That, that'll be fluid relatively, because it's not a solid number. What I'm saying is. The expenses that, that are taken.
But well, it doesn't, we won't, we're not transferring the actual expenses.
You're only setting a budget.
We're only setting and sped a budget for how much money gets transferred to pay their expenses. Transfer out to schoolhouse fund, except it'll be the number of the fund.
Okay, that makes sense, alright.
And how much should that expense number be? Do you want to transfer seven thousand over the course of a year, or eight thousand?
Um, I would be comfortable if you put ten thousand, because uh, there are a number of fees that are going up between um. The fire, not the fire code three, uh, the different water permits, uh, we have a lot of expenses. And to me, that would be a safe number, that even if we didn't uh, reach that number. It would be comfortable rather than playing catch-up.
That would be conservative.
That's not conservative.
No, you take ten, ten thousand out?
I'm not sure.
So, then leaving that to eighteen thousand.
Fair number, but I think I'm gonna point to, to Melissa, and, and if you can give me what the previous year's expenses were, other than what happened with the heat pumps.
I.
I could probably give you a, a little bit more honest number, based on what I've done.
Well, we have them mostly, Bruce.
That's okay, okay.
It's here.
Is that to thirty-five hundred that you came up with?
I was up to one, I don't know how much of repair and maintenance, how much there's, there was. Capital improvement was twenty thousand, I assume that's the heat pumps.
Yeah, yeah, so, that sounds like the transfer from our.
No, it's not a transfer. The actual expense for the heat, capital expense improvement, there was twenty thousand fifty-five dollars. Then repairs and ma- it doesn't, it's just, it doesn't say. You'd have to find the A, AP information. In repairs and maintenance, there's twenty-two thousand. Three hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents, so call it twenty-two, three, thirty-four. But outside of that number, there's a hundred and thirty plus two hundred and eighteen, which is two hundred and. Forty-eight plus a thousand. Plus another twenty-four hundred, plus three thousand, so there's three thousand, and I would take another, at least another seven thousand. So, make it, call it eight thousand, or eight-five hundred.
I was in, but it was an educated guess, I didn't really, really close to the numbers.
Just take the eight hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I like Stan's suggestion.
What's that?
Which was just, we have eight thousand eight hundred dollars, let's take that off the cost.
Eight hundred dollars, that, that, that twenty thousand.
Puts it back at what the original thinking was, okay.
So, we're gonna look at uh, income of, of uh.
Eight thousand.
Twenty thousand as an in- income, and uh, eight thousand eight hundred to be a transfer out line item over twelve months.
Well, yeah, they've created a leave, but the full, the gross amount of income is, is budgeted.
Correct, got it.
So, it's twenty, twenty thousand eight hundred for school revenue?
Yeah.
No, no, the, the revenue per, the, per revenue is twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay. So, where's, where's this other expense? Where are you putting this other expense?
It's going to be a new line item, a tran- a transfer line item of eight thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
Over the twelve-month period, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so um, anything else on this for income now? So, we scanned down, I think we pretty much did this first page here, let's just see.
We're missing, what do, what do we have for town clerk agents? We, I have.
That, that was increased last year.
What should it be? Should it be like an even twen- I have twenty-five nine forty-four for twenty twenty-four?
Right, there's no change in.
No change, or, okay.
Okay, okay. So, you know, the voids we have were um, apparel taxes, which we can't.
No, we'll, that'll be.
Alright, so town clerk is the same rate and hours. Treasure rate wages, we already talked about that in, in combining it with the administrative assistant, so we did that.
That's assistant treasurer.
Assistant treasurer, my bad.
Assistant treasurer, they stay as separate line items.
Yeah. Alright, so we, the lister wages, auditors, um, we're not doing it all. Okay, the auditors is the town orders. Are we going to ever have a town official audit?
If you wanna spend about fifteen to twenty grand, what is yours cost?
Eighteen. Okay, ours never had one, and I've been here ten years.
We had, the last time we had one was uh, the year before they hired me, and that was.
Lucky.
Yeah, yeah, I know what it's like. I've been on both sides of that table, and do we wanna start to save up?
We did, we should have a reserve somewhere that has money in it for an audit.
I think just two thousand dollars, not much, because about two thousand dollars.
I remember.
Yeah, there's two thousand dollars that we never felt like we could add more to it. So, what maybe?
Thousand dollars, actually.
There's four thousand dollars in it now.
I, I, I would, I would like to see us starting to put some money towards this, even if it's several years, you know, so I, I would see.
Sorry, how many years ago?
Yeah. Can we double, can we put four thousand dollars towards it this year?
Well, you'd have to warrant it as a separate article, because it's a refer, uh, we could try that.
Do it that way.
Let's, let's warrant a separate article for four thousand dollars toward an.
Well, I'm sorry, where are you? Uh, what, what are you discussing at this point?
Right now, we're discussing the audit.
We're discussing a special article, a special warning to add to an audit reserve.
Okay, so right now, uh, the budget is for twenty twenty-four, nine hundred dollars?
That is for our auditors, uh, Fred Rock, Fred, Frank, and Kendra, and um. Those are for the, their salaries. But that blew us in that we haven't had an audit, and we've talked about it for years.
So, we need to, need to create a line item for that, right?
So, you're creating another line item for that?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't go in your ordinary budget, it would be set up as a reserve, right, in its own fund, or?
Yeah, I mean, it's not really a reserve fund, but it's kind of designated.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
And you add it to what is already in the designated fund.
Yeah, it's more.
So, that the designated fund would now have eight thousand dollars towards an audit. And then every year, then we would get twenty thousand.
It has to be a special vote. If it's designated, it can be moved around.
Alright, so we will.
So, I don't know if you have a special article or not.
You don't, but I, I think rather than, we could, we could see what the budget looks like and put it in as a regular item. We've done that in the past, too. Yeah.
Since the school is town-owned and it's earning an income, a portion of that go toward?
It could, but we'd have to take it out of that, yeah.
That's what I'm worried, like.
I kind of, I mean, let's pencil in four grand, and then let's see what the tax rate is.
Okay.
Yeah, good idea.
Alright. Alright, so.
Absolutely.
What, everything else is going up?
Maybe not, but. Audit, audit, outside audit, independent audits or something like.
Alright, the auditor, we're auditors, leaving in on it was something I had.
If we look.
How much are you appropriating for that?
We're not appropriating it yet, we're looking at adding four thousand dollars to four thousand dollars that are already in the fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, okay. Alright, town, assistant town clerk wages, I think we, what is that one up?
We have everything in the wages.
Okay, that's done.
Records restoration is in a separate fund now, but it kind of covers itself. Cause, I mean, um, it actually makes sense to do that, because.
In the records restoration fund, you, I'm looking at a zero, uh, I'm not sure what your.
On Fund One, it's, it's a zero, but there's a whole new fund for that, Guy. Records restoration has its own fund.
Where is that?
It's a separate, it's, it's fund, it's pa- it's page seven of fifteen. If you were in the comparative budget report.
Right.
And so.
It has thirteen thousand nine hundred nine seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents in period twelve, twenty twenty-three.
I don't know, I'm not, the seven of fifteen?
No, the reason, yeah, the reason why it's, it's seven of fifteen, if you have, it's a, it's its own fund now. Called record restoration.
Yep, I see that.
Yeah, and.
And I see sixteen ninety.
Sixteen two.
Sixteen ninety was the record, records restoration wages, what do you think it should be? It should probably.
I'm trying to understand how you come to that uh, number, I, 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 I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't know how, I don't know how they got sixteen, oh, well, they probably looked at the twenty twenty-three budget. And added a little bit to it.
One's been doing two hours a week, uh, two hours a week toward the records restoration, she's down to book twenty. Um, and I'm not sure how, how that's figured in now, I'm, I'm a little lost.
Record restoration wages come out of the record restoration fund.
They come out of the recreation, records restoration fund, which earns money. You know, records restoration revenue is how much per page now, on copies and things like that? No, the total clerk fee is fifteen per page, but records restoration is a piece of that.
Four dollars.
Four dollars? So, how many pa- you know, so it's the.
So, I'm looking at four hundred pages a year for recording, so.
Four hundred times four.
So, that would be sixteen hundred, right?
Yeah, sixteen hundred in, in revenue, and approximately, and the. The.
Eight hours a month for.
Eight hours a month for times whatever one salary is. What's your, what's, what's this?
No, it's two, it's two hours a, a week. So, it's four hours uh, every two weeks, yeah, eight hours a month, I guess.
About twenty an hour?
Yeah. Eight, times twenty.
She's sixteen now.
Yeah, but she hasn't had a raise for a while. Are we gonna raise that? This is an interesting conversation, because I was talking to people. No, I won't, I wanna thank you.
I'm gonna do this, oh, wait a minute.
Eighteen hours, eight hours a month, eight times twelve times whatever an hourly rate is.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna say. Eight times. Twelve months. Ninety-six equals ninety-six times sixteen, sixteen fifty, what?
Seventeen would be sixteen thirty-two.
Would be sixteen thirty-two.
And, and they added, the change was one thousand six hundred ninety, so this is still, this is.
I would leave it at one six ninety, leave a little, yeah, leave it the same.
What, we'll leave it the same, because there's not much change, one thousand six hundred ninety.
So, basically, you're saying that when the payroll is generated, how is that money funded toward the sixteen hundred ninety dollars?
It's paid out of the revenue that goes into the same fund, and it's paid, yeah, it, which it's always been. I mean, it was always, it's paid out of the same bank account, on the same page. It's just, it's, it's just being recorded in a different manner. Blotting's here than the way I'm.
Sixteen ninety, though.
Yeah, we just rounded up.
No, where'd you put it, though?
In the, in, on page seven of, I don't think I gave you those pages. Page seven of fifteen.
That's okay.
It's called comparative budget report.
Okay.
Total expenditures.
Cause historically, we only, we budgeted everything in funds one and two, so we have to adapt to the new way.
It's alright, I'm gonna start out with that, okay.
I wanna make a just little discussion, um, that I know New Thing does, and I, I maybe this is something that Brookline should do. Um, and that is annually, they, stop me if I'm wrong, but um, there's a fifty cent. Per hour raise on an annual basis for people who are getting salary, uh, working on an hourly basis.
Correct, is that what we? They don't really have like a set thing, they've kind of all over the board, one year a hundred dollar, then it's been like fifty cents. Three dollars, four dollars, last year, it was just kind of all over the board. Some people have like four dollars, some people.
I thought it was everyone would go off a certain.
Amount.
Yeah, the last couple of years, they've been really all over the board.
I was talking to Becky today, and she was telling me like, make some of her raises, some of her concerns.
All right, well, let's get, let's, let's move along here. It's, um, okay, here. We're still on this first page? No. We're done with the first page, right?
I think we're done on our first page. Are there any new appropriations that came in?
Uh, no appropriations came in.
Why do we have the line term?
All right, we'll take a look at the second page. Uh, it starts off, it says page two of. Three.
Mine says page two of three.
Right. And we have, everything has a number to it. There was a question about insurance and bonds. Somewhere you were gonna check.
Yeah.
About that.
So I think. I think our insurance rate, I did start looking into it, but I didn't pull all the invoices. It looks like our insurance wages did go up quite a bit. So I would say probably use. Uh, but I questioning the eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen, Melissa, because if you look at the dues. For V L C T.
For V L C T, we're missing the dues.
So I think that maybe there's maybe two grand worth of dues or something like that buried in the.
Think also, it wasn't getting coded when the expenses came into highway?
Yes, there's some, there's an insurance expense to highway. Something highway.
That is in there, okay.
So is some in highway, but, I mean, we'll have to look at what the actual, I mean, we'll have to look at it before this goes to the auditors, but. Yeah, to see where they belong really. But eight thousand seemed a little high for me for just Fund One insurance.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it too because I'm not sure where they're being quoted to.
So do you want me to leave that open or do you want to say you want to move it to six thousand? Considering that two thousand may be part of V L C T.
Yeah, well, it could be two things. It could be six thousand belongs to V L C T and another portion belongs to the highway fund.
I'm sorry, where are we?
Right here.
What page?
Page two.
Page two.
Insurance bonds.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen, we talked about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and then last question, I'm sorry, I got lost in the discussion with the, uh, Records, uh, Restoration, what's the number? Sixteen ninety or sixteen?
Sixteen ninety.
Okay, same. I'm sorry about trouble.
That's okay.
All right, I did get the Wyndham Waste, oh, and Dot, Dot and I both got the Wyndham Waste Management Number.
Our assessment will be.
Three thousand, eight hundred, sixty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So let's say thirty-nine hundred?
I would say thirty-eight seventy.
Thirty-eight seventy.
Wait, that's the landfill fees?
Yeah, because we have the actual number, so there's no point in rounding up that much.
Where is that one?
It's one, it's on the old.
Old cemetery?
It's one, seven, thirty, forty-five point oh one.
Okay. Landfill fees, Wyndham Solid Waste Management District.
And that was thirty-eight seventy?
Yeah. Thirty-eight seventy.
And actually, um. Melissa told me, yeah, after going round and round trying to get the actual Wyndham County tax, which I couldn't get. They said it wasn't going to go up very much. But I don't know what it was to share, but I did pull that report. You know, where is?
What's that? It's Wyndham County Tax.
Management District.
I think landfill fees, landfill fees. Landfill.
One cents, thirty, forty-five point oh one.
And we had a number of.
So I think it should be somewhere in the five thousand dollar range. Just talk my son now.
For our Wyndham County tax.
I can look that up because that went up last year.
Eighty-eight seventy is the landfill.
That's our change a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah, because I don't think that two eight one fifty.
The two eight one isn't right because I think they missed a payment.
No, it wasn't missed. It was put into the following year.
It was put in the wrong year.
I ended up rolling it back, but I know this was under budgeted. So I have to look. Okay.
So Melissa's gonna find us the Wyndham County tax.
Okay.
So we're just moving down law enforcement. We got the recycling collection.
What do we settle on? We'll settle on insurance again?
Insurance and bonds, she's going to check.
Okay. Boy, okay.
Because there is still.
Oh, and maybe you can, what are the miscellaneous bank fees these days?
They just, yeah, they have bank fees now.
Oh, because it's M and T?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's getting, well, matter what, they hate it.
I know.
All right, so.
We have a couple of about two seventy again.
Okay, two seventy. So all right, bank fees, two seventy, but let's go up because we had a couple of other ones we were checking on, um. All right, we already said the animal impound expense. We were gonna ask about that. Should that?
Well, probably let's just put in three hundred.
Okay, let's put in three hundred. Just to be safe. Cemetery lawn, we got, okay, Wyndham County tax, you're gonna find it. All right, so we run down here. Broadcast fees are zero, bank, um, buyer permits, we have a fifty, two hundred and seventy dollars for miscellaneous bank fees.
Yep.
And then the, then we have our appropriations, which, uh, we have no additional appropriations that came in other than what we did last time.
And Dot, can you give me the total again? Cause I completely forgot to write it down.
Okay.
Sorry. It was eight thousand something. Minus the fifteen ninety that Sev- Sebets is asking and minus the eleven hundred that more free library is asking. Cause they, they get warned separately.
All right, I had it added up somewhere else, but let me go back.
Is it in the minutes?
Yeah, it's just.
Check.
Probably is.
What do you mean?
This is, this is.
We voted on it, so it should be.
Yeah.
Um, what I've got is eight thousand.
I'm gonna say good night at this point. I think, uh, I've, I don't think there's anything more I could add. So, um, I'll see you folks tomorrow, unless there's something that you want to ask me?
Yeah, I think last year for the town report, you provided, uh, the, uh, animal fees, their marriages, the fees for a number of births and deaths, et cetera. Uh, there's a standard number of reports that you submit. Uh, you, you will be doing the same this year.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I have to wait.
Any idea when you might be ready?
Uh, I have to wait for the end of the year to, uh, to, uh, put those together, but we usually have them within the first week or two of January. And I send them to Dave. I guess, I, I, you know, I don't know if that's gonna be the protocol again this year. Uh, but he's asked me for that and I also send him the mailing list for the, uh, town booklets.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Is there, is there any specific date that you, is there a drop dead date on that?
Well, we want to have all the reports by January third so we can get them to David. So if you can get them.
He just said we won't have until about the twelfth or fifteenth.
We won't have them until the twelfth. Or the.
I think that's about when they came together, but for some reason, I thought they were sent, there were a number of things that were sent to me. I put things together and then sent it to David and then some things went directly to David. I'm just trying to, I'll have to go back and look at my records between now and the end of the year.
You know.
Basically, I do the viral records and the, uh, that was pretty much it.
Yeah.
That was, uh, and, and I usually, I usually send them to David, but if that changes, let me know.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
You too.
Vanessa, I'm sorry, I, I don't have my tally sheet with me. Did you say you had it in the minutes?
Yeah.
It's, what was that number?
Eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Okay.
And that included the one, yeah, that, is that include the one thousand, five hundred?
No, no, excluding, excluding because they weren't separately.
Right. One thousand, five hundred and ninety and one, eleven hundred. Which is more free library.
Okay. All right.
So we can move right past the appropriations as they are. And then we are on page four of fifteen. Yeah, which is the highway budget. And then we had forty-six thousand in state aid.
Right.
And ten thousand in a G I A grant.
Correct. Forty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Right. You really, you want to make it?
Unless you want to round it.
I would round it.
That's the notice from the state.
Well.
Forty-six one?
Forty-six seventy-five. Oh, seven, five. So, okay, in my accounting brain, you under budget a little revenue and over budget expenses, a little bit, but not a lot.
Um.
And no better backroads grants in the budget, just a G I A grant.
Correct.
Okay.
So I need to add a line item for G I A?
Yeah, you can, you can probably substitute the salt shed, you know, or add however you want to do it.
I actually had it on the list. I already gave it a number.
Okay, cool.
I see somebody that already had any of them, did the same thing with others.
All right, so highway grants FEMA, um.
Hopefully we don't have.
Yes, yeah.
No.
We are not budgeting.
Not budgeting for that.
That's my welcome back.
Highway grants, but if every roads highway salt shed grant, we're not budgeting for that. permits revenue necessarily budgeted interest. Interest, a hundred dollars again? If barely.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, a hundred dollars for revenue in this particular line item. All right, um, as we move down into the salaries, let's talk about the salaries, um. Uh, the Vermont minimum wage is going up in January to, uh, to thirteen dollars and some odd cents. Um, highway mileage is going up as well, I believe, two sixteen, seven cents.
That's I R S.
That's I R S.
Yeah.
Um, so as far as salaries, are we looking at a percentage or how do you, what is the best way to do this? Grand act over here helping out. What do we do?
To budget sal- salaries?
Yes, do we want to look at increases individually?
Or we should.
You got five on the list.
We should, I'd do a separate spreadsheet. If I'd thought about it.
You got five that you put in your hourly positions, right? Have not been raised in three years.
Are we, are we, are you talking about highway salaries or?
Way or all the?
Well, uh, yeah, I, I guess I was throwing it out. As far as, um. Everybody.
Okay.
Um, then, then I would like to get a spreadsheet with the salaries.
Is it, do you have that somewhere?
There used to be one in the file.
Okay.
Um, but probably half the people have changed now. But just, we could just.
Throw something over there.
Yeah.
Because if we're gonna do like, hey, you know, maybe five percent increase or sixty percent increase, or are you talking about adding dollars to the? Or sign, whatever.
How does the board want to do some kind, I'd like to have some kind of pattern to follow. It would be good to develop some kind of a system.
Thank you, yes.
That's what I'm saying. Cause it's always been so haphazard except for back in the years when nobody got raises.
Right.
Right. So can we put on the agenda for the next one to review, come up with a salary?
Review.
Sound, okay.
I mean, the last time thorough research was done, has anybody checked the V L C T compensation? Thing that they sent us?
Yeah, well, I, I had run it in and the wages we have now are in the middle kind of.
Yeah, but the new one, we got a new one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So.
How many, how many people?
How many people do we have on payroll?
Five or six?
We have numbers right now, but if we're contemplating wages, we might revise them. You just have to.
Okay.
If we're contemplating raises.
Raises, yeah.
Yeah, we have the treas- treasurers, town clerk, assistant town clerk, listeners, highway supervisor. Those are the hourly people.
Is Mark considered full-time?
No, thirty hours, nothing.
Thirty hours.
Thirty-two and a half would be full-time. So.
Yeah, I would put together a spreadsheet.
All right, I'll put that on there for that.
If I finish the FEMA stuff, I can do that in spare time, right?
There shouldn't be much talk to the.
No, first, first I have to make a, set it warmer and then I'll finish it.
Okay, let's can move on down here, highway, um. If we're not changing anything at this time, the highway salaries would be, uh, at fifty-two, at, at, um, thirty hours a week, fifty-two hours a week, thirty dollars an hour. It's fifty-two thousand dollars. So I'm gonna put that in. As, as the.
With the same Bennys, right?
Correct. Summer highway.
Except mileage should go down. Mileage should probably go down. There might still be some.
Eighty-seven hundred and fifty?
That's generous.
About five hundred?
I put in seven fifty, that's fine.
When you say generous, I thought you was.
No, I was just thinking that's, you know.
Okay, let's put down summer, uh, summer highway employee mileage. It's seven hundred and fifty dollars, so that's a reduction of a thousand dollars, um. Okay. Boy, my eyes are half, giving me a hard time tonight. Wyndham Regional Commission Grants.
That was payback and we're not doing that.
So, oh, we already did that. So we're gonna skip down to employee IRA contributions. You have that. It depends upon the cost of the salary and how many hours you work.
What is it per?
It's five percent match.
Five percent match.
Okay.
So we don't have a total five.
No.
So what's the number there?
It's a five percent match and well, once we get a final, we can do it, we can budget a five. We're leaving it blank for now.
Tonight. Payroll tax.
Is calculated.
Again, that would have to be summer payroll tax for highway, uh, would that, with thirty-nine hundred, we, what, we would?
No, we would, we would, well, if it's the same and if the thirty-nine hundred was calculated at the right rates, then it will be the same.
Okay, but we don't, not sure.
So we should. And what's, isn't there a new tax?
Yeah, I was just gonna say there's a new tax. It's a childcare tax. It's a four, four percent.
Point four four.
The town's required to pay point three, three percent. And then the employees have to pay point eleven percent or the town can pay their eleven percent, point eleven percent also.
Okay.
So.
Plus. All employees on the town books are going to have a new childcare tax.
I heard.
Is this true for elected officials too?
As far as I know.
Well, the Suda.
I haven't heard much about it. I just thought one thing.
Elected officials are exempt from Suda because obviously you're elected, you can't get fired. So.
I've only seen one thing on it so far.
Hmm.
And that's what it is, is point four, four percent.
So that would give you a, a twelve pers, a point one, two, nine, five raise. Twelve, approximately thirteen cents on the dollar. Approximately. I took the. The five hundred.
Four. Seven, point six, five plus the.
I added the point oh, point four plus Suda's in that about two.
Sure.
Yeah.
Would that be something that you could calculate for the, uh, salary when we talk about that next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know if you guys are gonna do the point four four or point three, three though as a town.
Say point four four to be conservative. You know, it's only point one one difference, you know.
So point four four?
So the town will just pay the whole thing then?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Isn't that we do no other benefits?
Yeah, that would be, we'll pick up the tax on that.
I don't even have any kids in daycare.
I know. Okay, um, we're continuing down the page. We dropped there. I think we were gonna ask about the highway insurance, Judy.
Oh, yeah, highway insurance is probably too low. Because that's probably why it's so high in. It's, it's too high in Fund One and not high enough in Fund Two. So we'll have to reallocate that. We'll have to look at, I pulled that information. I just didn't.
Okay, so I'll leave it as asked on there, so.
It's the highway insurance. The highway insurance?
The highway insurance, yeah, we're gonna check that out.
I did, I got, I got a lot of the reports from Judy that I wanted to look at, you know, to dig into the details. And see what they were, but.
Right, and we, we dropped that line item on equipment fuel because we broke it down. So we are down at the bottom of the page, let's go to the next page, right?
Comment if I may?
Yes, sir.
I looked up the uh, M R G P fees. And the annual was five hundred and then it says administrative two hundred and forty dollars.
Oh.
And I'm trying to remember if the administrative was done every year. I looked at several documents today and I couldn't find out which.
Well, I was gonna say six forty because I couldn't figure it out either, they have five hundred and two forty.
Yeah, so it's seven forty.
Only one annual fee. And looking back, we paid five hundred at one point two forty, but they've been curating it each year because they've been changing the date.
Oh.
So. I would say max you could drop that down to six forty.
Okay, from nine hundred to six forty. Got it.
Hmm. Well, yeah.
We don't have the H E R E I for another five years or the N O Y.
Seven thirty-four-eight dash oh-two, point oh-two highway stormwater management.
Oh, and you're changing to what?
Six forty.
Six forty.
Okay.
And I have ten thousand dollars for equipment parts and five thousand for fuel, does that sound right?
Yes, based on. Five thousand for fuel and ten thousand for maintenance and parts. And then we have to budget for our loan twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars, that's.
So that's gonna be, that's gonna go in instead of highway equipment rental.
Correct.
Okay, loan. Twen- how much is it?
Twenty-four thousand two hundred, correct Sam?
Correct.
Loan, excavator loan.
I have written down your twenty-four thousand.
Yes, I have too.
There's twenty-four thousand for year number one.
Oh, and I, I have twenty-four two.
I had, I had, I have both, I have a zero and a two written over each other.
Do we have a document, we can go check that? Well, it's two hundred dollars, so I think we were.
We'll just rounding, we leave it two thousand a month.
Okay. We put in, you know, everything else has a loan.
Right.
And.
So, okay, and. Sans is gonna look at that one number.
So we're in pretty okay shape, amazingly.
But I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, and I looked up a policy for rainy day funds, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
We have to fill in the details, but the L C T has a template. And I just borrowed your template. And if you add that to the agenda for the next. Meeting, we can. Define our specific. Purposes.
Let us talk about it.
I, I.
It's a policy?
Yeah. Cause I would love to see a policy on that.
Yeah, I think that's, that, that's fine, before we put money in it more, you know, we should know what.
Because it truly is a reserve fund. You can't.
So I have a couple of other things. Okay, let me ask this, are we? But let me just, are we budgeting grant matches for the highway department at this time and how much?
Cause there's two thousand dollars that we're gonna be responsible for, for the G I A grant.
So do you wanna, do you wanna like? What do you think? Do you guys budget grant matches?
No, so that's actually what we use our rainy day budget stabilization fund for. We have that reserve.
Yeah.
But it's bigger.
Yeah, it goes in and out and, you know.
That would be, that would be a good way to do it. Okay, because that's kind of like one of the things, like when you know you're getting money. And it, you don't wanna have to raise your taxes, actually that's exactly what the V L C T.
Perfect.
Herbage that it says, so we should.
And then at the end of the year, you just have to kind of replenish what your match percent was and bring it back up to where you want it.
Let me ask this, are we going to budget any money for capital improvements at the shed, at the town yard? We talked about uh, supporting it better, bigger maintenance and, and adding additional bay for covering up the gravel, should we? Budget some money for that improvement, I also wanted to throw out there the cement floor, we have eight thousand dollars for that.
We still have money?
Yeah, it was, it was supposed to be moved into another fund, but it didn't get to the treasurer three years ago when we did it, so it's still in its own fund.
That's eight years, ten years.
We've done our maintenance costs of ten thousand, okay, and the greater replacement, are we looking to?
We should put that into equipment maintenance. If you wanna, if you wanna like, put, because the greater is equipment. And that would come under maintenance.
Okay.
Unless you think we need to replace it imminently.
We don't have to, Mark?
But I'm sure it needs to.
The greater?
It's in nineteen eighty-eight.
Nineteen eighty-eight. And how much do they run new, or new used, new to us?
I'm not sure the price of new.
No. We never buy new.
Years probably thirty, forty calories.
So I'm just looking that maybe we, again, like with the audit fee, that we might want to start to look ahead. Rather than be, the machine broke down and we can't fix our dirt loads.
So what, what you could do, you could approach it two ways.
I will.
You could do a special article to like, do like, uh. Which is what they did when I first moved here, there would be a special warning to build up the surplus in the highway fund. You know, for greater replacement costs. Or equipment replacement costs.
That's what I want, equipment replacement.
Equipment replacement costs, you could put.
Capital fund?
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Yeah, sorry to anyways, that doesn't happen.
The loan payment in June of next summer is twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Fall is surprise.
Okay, walls right on, twenty-four two hundred. So, um, we do have a capital improvement fund, are we saying that that would go in, that maybe we should?
If it's going into that fund. Well, capital improvement fund, what's, I mean, there could be buildings and there could be equipment, it can be.
Central and had the two thousand bucks in.
The capital improvement fund has two thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Two thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Because I think you, I think you budgeted.
Six thousand four hundred and thirty-nine.
Then what am I looking at?
I think there was one point that there was a piece of it over on this other side.
Yeah.
I put them together. So what is there was four thousand on this?
Okay, so six, four, three, nine?
Yeah, I kind of want to combine them.
Okay, yeah.
Six, four, three, nine. Is in the capital improvement, right.
So if the capital improvement fund is for buildings and equipment replacement. Uh, what's the pleasure of this board, I do think that. The future, I, I wanna protect future boards from having an oh no moment like we've had, had. Years.
Well. I think. I think, you know, this is like what was done in the past, did they warrant a special item? You know, you warn how much you think you wanna add to this fund. And let, let, cause it's not an operating fund, it's, has to be warned for a special fund.
Okay.
So it can't be part of the normal operating budget.
Right.
So how much, you know, I don't, I don't know. Uh, something like add four thousand, add five thousand, add some odd number to make it an even ten thousand in, you know, to get it, build it up by year by year. I don't know what you have in mind.
Well, I wanted to see what you all, we're thinking, I wasn't sure what the cost, so if we're looking at something that, that might be a, you know, another loan item, we could always take a loan and then use the capital improvement and build it up after the fact. Um, I, I would like to see some money go into it and maybe even. Appropriate a transfer out from the uh, rental funds from the daycare could be used that way.
Could be?
It wouldn't be a, a liability on the tax burden.
We're really increasing.
That's the kind of thing I think that would be.
I'd like to see some total.
Purpose. That's what I thought it's purpose.
Yeah, we have to see what it does to the tax bill.
I'm not happy.
Yeah.
You're not happy with what?
Well, we're increasing everything, I just like to see this whole thing printed out, read it.
Why don't we, why don't we get it, get some rough ideas of what the general operations is gonna cost in terms of tax rate? And then.
Yes.
And then, cause you can, you can kind of.
Still get it, get a pretty good handle on it.
My concern is that they're gonna be working on the auditors during Christmas break. They don't have a meeting until January.
They audit, they audit, they don't audit the budget.
Okay.
They audit the last.
Last year's budget, oh, you're right, I'm sorry, but so, we're good.
Put together and do the rest.
Yeah, get a rough estimate of what the taxes, among the tax we have to raise just for operations. And then we can like go compare it to last year, which was pretty awful to be honest, you know. And see if we can come up with something that's not as awful, but a little bit more than. Those before.
I'm sensitive to both, what you're both saying, because it seems like everything we're going, yes, up, 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 and it's gonna be a slam all in one year.
Well, the way I see it.
We don't wanna do that.
This is a hard way to do that, I really don't need to support at all, and I know we have to do it this way, but what I'd like to see is when we're done with. With whatever we got, print it out again and see what it looks like.
Oh, yeah.
And see, cause this is.
I was gonna warn you though.
To be done.
I, I will just give you a heads up because I printed out a clean budget copy. Because I forgot, we did our budget based on our old chart of accounts. And Melissa has changed the chart of accounts.
That's what you were just saying.
So, so things will look a little different, but everything will be there, it will just look a little different.
Good.
But that's here. Yeah, but it's, but you've got. They're all covered, we don't have to use up the alphabet to start a new fund. You know.
Alright, so I just, reason why I'm just making sure that, you know, are we going to, like I said, match the grant, I like that budget from rainy day fund and through the shed at the townyard, that would be capital improvements, we're gonna discuss to see what our budget looks like. Are we going to add, we have eight thousand dollars uh, to add a cement floor to the. Uh, building where we store our equipment, that's good, that's not enough to cover that. Uh, I think we already talked about the maintenance costs and the greater replacement, uh, again, to be, to discuss. Um, capital improvement, that is another question I had. You know, what can we use that for, but we'll talk about that, we don't know, do you know if there is a surplus or a deficit from June of twenty twenty-three offhand, unofficially?
Not yet.
Okay.
I've looked at.
There was no surplus exception.
There wasn't a surplus, except. The highway, yeah, not.
You're just talking highway?
The, the general fund, we have to back up the education taxes still. From last year. Because they're running through the expense and you have to back them on it because they're not part of our expense.
Right.
I thought they were already out, but maybe not.
I don't think so.
Did we decide on seminar fees, what, what number?
Yeah, we did.
We did?
I don't know, I'm.
I have forty dollars.
You did, okay.
See if we can accrue any of the things for taxes. Oh. All right, um. So we'll talk about that now, yeah.
They are on Christmas. You work at this doctor? I'll be home tomorrow, sorry, just calling.
Pardon?
Um, I'll be home tomorrow, so you can call me.
Oh, okay.
I also. I also wanted to know, you know, are we looking at budgeting any specifics for the meeting house? Are we, we're looking at the town hall improvements, we're looking at, has it, you're?
No.
Okay?
Because we're waiting to see if we can get money through the M R F grants.
But, and hazard mitigation plans?
Uh. Do you need money to budget?
I don't, I, I don't, I don't know.
We've got a ten, was it a ten thousand dollar grant, and I think the contract was for less than that. But I think there's a twenty percent match there too, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So we're talking another two thousand dollars, you might have to come up with, if it's, the bid was pretty close to ten thousand.
Comes out of the um, uh, rainy day fund, that's fine, I think we should, the rainy day fund needs to be. Budgeted a little bit this year as well because we are less than our fifteen percent, so I would like to see at least another ten thousand dollars, if not more, go into the, into that fund. We've already cut out a hundred thousand dollars. We cut out a hundred thousand dollars already.
Yeah, but we're, we're due to get, you, you guys are forgetting, we're due to get over a hundred thousand dollars back. From the twenty twenty-one.
Right.
I.
Hundred and seventy-two thousand. Hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Approximately.
Approximately.
I can.
If it's all obligated.
If it's all obligated.
Okay.
On these two projects.
All right. All right, I just didn't want to run into, leave another board with, you know, financial news.
Uh, what, you're familiar with the obligation process and so forth?
They're not obligated yet.
Right.
They will be.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm saying, if they're both obligated, with the whole amount.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I looked at, yeah, this is just so you can see, I can just. Print without.
Thank you for all the work you've done on that, by the way.
See, just for the, what you finished.
Which one, Hollandville?
Uh, oh no, this isn't Hollandville, we have to look at this, so I have money, I won't hand you that.
Yeah, if it's not a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, roughly, then it's not.
It's a hundred and fifty-two thousand, don't hand it out yet.
Okay.
It's gone up.
Got it, it's gone up.
All right, so we're, we're good right now with our budget, we have a couple of things to tie together through January third meeting, if uh, correct. And we can move on to the next agenda item, if anybody has anything else to ask Melissa.
This is gonna be reprinted or do we have?
Yes, it'll be reprinted.
Okay.
I'll do this one tomorrow.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Little up and down that, I, I, hey, dealing with other people's money.
I'll put, talk to them.
The liabilities and the responsibilities.
And I'll see you Saturday morning.
So, party.
I know.
I have to start this, I have it Saturday, so.
No, it will, it will be out.
So the next.
Thank you for all your.
All right, so the next item is to review, uh, requested changes to the contract for the Brooklyn Meeting House Foundation work. Um. I received in the email today from. Um, Stan, a updated work change order for addendum F to Perry Born's contract. Where it was identified that the cost of the vapor barrier materials and installation of labor increased from three thou- three hundred to five hundred and eighty-two dollars. The cost of materials and labor for the sill replacement was one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um. And so I think we voted and agreed that that would. That, that is why it's on this form and that, once. The contractor and the town sign off on this, I think tonight the town's gonna sign off on it.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, on, on those two increases.
One, one correction.
Eighteen hundred, right?
The project original completion date on the contract, I had put in December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, it's actually December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. So the copy, I printed out a new one with the correction, and there was another correction as well.
Okay.
And, and I, I fixed that.
Okay. Um.
So the original budget amount, it, that has not changed. Uh, so the project total cost in bold for number two, which is on page two, turns out to be thirty-four thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars.
Yeah.
Right, that's what mine says.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right. Um. And so I can sign for the town, since we've already voted on it, everybody has seen.
We all agree, okay.
There was one other request before I do sign it, in case we need to add item C. Uh, and this was a request for an additional, um, uh, advance on the. Contract amount.
Recent.
He was given an original. Ten thousand dollar advance. Any wants like, yeah, but. I don't believe that the meeting house has the funds to.
Hey, we could ask Melissa if she believes. I didn't ask her that, I should have gotten it. Yeah.
Who needs to wait? Or was the original, it's not the original?
It's like she's after work changes.
I got that. Find out how much more work really. I mean, then you know.
The, the problem is that the money to pay for this project are two grants, one is a federal grant, ARPA, which we can't spend. Until the project has been inspected and approved and finished, and the other is a grant from the Vermont.
Vermont Preservation, something or other.
And they, they have, they have requirements too.
Yeah, that's, it's being completed as well.
So if we were to advance and the project did not get finished, the town would be totally responsible.
Well, the grant. Well, whenever you're ready for someone has to put input. We've already broken the rules by giving the initial ten thousand dollars, cause it wasn't done to begin with. We could have said, no, no money at all until the project is done, we didn't do that.
Correct.
So we have set a precedent and the question then becomes. He's looking for eighteen-eight as an advance.[1764.94] Uh and I have no idea what the, what the meeting house committee feels.
Yeah, I didn't look at the original fund, what they have in their fund. But if they only have like twenty thousand dollars in their fund.
Twenty-five, I think.
Twenty, twenty-five, that's too much to, to shell out.
Correct.
So I would, I would, if you feel like we can compromise, then I would say you still, I mean, you know, if, he, he should have read the contract and it's on.
That's his.
That's right.
I agree.
Yeah.
We don't get our money back from the state until the work is done.
So.
What needs to be done? That's, that's the question. Is it finished?
Yes, when you're ready, let me know and I'll tell you.
Question.
I'll tell you.
How much has to be done?
Go ahead.
What needs to be done is frankly, and this is, this section is, this i- issue is my own personal. He laid down the two layers of plastic, but where the piers are, what he did is he cut holes. Or cut it so that it's just around the post. What I would like to see is, is there's a tape, there's a special tape you put on outside of buildings to keep the elements out. It's around each of the two piers, ask him to put tape so that the moisture doesn't seep up by it. It's completely enclosed below on grade one, period. Other than that, what he feels is necessary to do is on the very east side, the gable rear of the annex. And on the north side of the annex, in order to bring it up to the ground level that has started on the south side and goes, basically, he'd like to continue that height up and around uh that addition on the two sides. So he's got that he wants to finish. That will then need to be seeded. And he has an idea.
Seeded?
Brass seeded.
Oh, like brass seed?
Yeah, because it's gonna leave just plain loam. So he wants to level the loam around the remainder of the building. And then he had this aesthetics idea of putting flat stone on the drip line around the two sides. Uh well, at least on the north side. I don't know what he's got on the south side. What he has done is he's put a trench in and he's filled the trench with cr- with small stone. I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea because when you have a trench, water can pool there. And then does it infiltrate underneath the vapor barrier? But, but that's what he thinks are done, he would like to do. Level the ground around the building. He's got seeding to do. That's the second thing he's acknowledged. And thirdly, he would like to put some kind of stone around it to beautify it a little bit. And also, when the rain comes off the, the roof, instead of falling on the seeded, ultimately seeded gravel ground, loam, he thought it would be nice to have those s- flat stone there. And he'd do that for the four, remaining four thousand dollars. And he didn't mention, I didn't bring up to him was, what about sealing around the piers?
Yeah.
The piers, that's inside.
That's underneath in the crossways.
Yet that, I would say, needs to be done. Would you?
Yes.
Well, I would say it needs to be done, but I mean, that wasn't one of the original contract.
Well, it was to install vapor barrier. Why install a vapor barrier? So that can.
No, no, what I'm saying is the vapor barrier was an afterthought.
Yes, it was.
Of the original contract.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, get an idea of how much of the original contract was done.
Of the contract.
Of the original twenty-nine.
Yeah, right.
Eight.
Whatever it was, I mean.
Pretty much all of it.
Pretty much all of it.
That's the thing, it's like, it's.
But we can't release the money.
Finish, the finish stuff is not done.
We're at the point that can be inspected.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's.
That's where I'm with you. That's the point. We're at the point where that original work at twenty-nine, whatever it is, was done supposedly. Now we're at the point, I believe, he's adding another stuff to recreate.
No, he, he originally, we had originally put in the RFP grading so that it's finished the same and seeding. What he's, what, so that, and that part has not been done. That was part of the original.
Okay, okay.
That was my question.
Okay, so not until that is done, can we call the state, uh with uh, start preservation, come down, take a look at it? And then we get our money. Until that point, we don't get the money.
Their money, right.
Yeah, it's clear.
So, yeah.
So I, you know, I don't, I'm.
I don't see where.
I guess if it were any other contractor, I'd say, yeah, you gotta make them wait because that's what the contract sets. You know?
It's true.
It's.
He did say, he, he did say that he would be willing to go along with whatever the select board decided. You should know that. He did say, whatever we decide, he will go along.
And I think, I think it's simple that we don't have a lot of cash right now. We don't as a town. There have been times in the past where we've had a lot of cash in the bank. So probably we should just wait until it's done, done, done.
Same with that.
Probably, unless there's serious financial.
There is no motion to, no one's making a motion to uh amend the contract to give a second installment, no. installment. Any motion on the floor for a second installment for the sender?
I, I guess I really can't, can't see my way to it.
We, we will be sending a check for the additional.
Three thousand.
Yeah, for this.
Whatever that was.
But. Okay, no motion on the floor, we're gonna move on, I'll.
So I can put none under C on the?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will sign it for the town and then we'll get um him to sign it and then we'll have, he'll have a check cut at the next appropriate, next uh January third meeting.
For just for, for what?
For the three, the extra, the extra, extra three thousand or whatever. The one thousand two hundred and fifty plus the five hundred and eighty-two.
Yeah.
One thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, excuse me, actually, I'll read you that now.
Yeah, okay, so.
Uh okay, so there's that original three and then the eighteen thirty-two. So you're gonna cut check for the four, eight, three, two?
One and eight, three, two.
Or just the one, eight, three, two?
Just what we go.
Because the three thousand was an increase over the original estimate.
Over here, just right now.
Remember, it went from twenty-nine, eight to thirty-two, eight. And then we just, it was indicated that.
It, where does this?
Okay.
Well, the, the work change order, the first work change order that you were involved with.
Yes.
There was a discussion of the three thousand dollar increase for the total project.
Right.
Agreed upon.
So I see what you're saying. You're saying that we should uh.
If somebody's got to send him a letter.
Yes.
And I want to make sure the numbers are right.
Okay, so you're looking, I'm looking at it now. I have it here. Um, he was given ten thousand dollars and that's all we have. Uh we have approved a monetary increase of three thousand dollars for the increase in operating costs plus this eighteen thirty-two, correct?
Yes.
That's what you're saying.
Yes, and in theory, if we're not in let, uh giving any more money beyond the ten, we don't need to even send that, correct?
Yet.
So.
You don't need to.
We, no, we don't. So I guess, I, that's all I'm asking is, we're num- mentioning numbers here all of a sudden, three thousand here, eight, five, eighty-two here. I just want to know is, if we're not extending any further money beyond the initial dispersion of ten thousand, there's no money that's gonna get more until the job is done. So I don't need to mention any of that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. I think I wrote, I shared it, I CC'd Stan as my vice chair. Um I wrote to Mr. Born and told him of the town's uh thing about the vendor, whatever, but I also said that we voted to approve the one thousand, the, the one thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and that we once.
But you didn't say it was as of additional dispersment. You just said we approved it.
Okay.
So I don't know how to tur- take that. I just want, that's why I'm asking, so that we're all clear on what it is we're intending to say and what we in fact say.
All right, what's on the board, what?
There's two ways of looking at approving it. It's like, we didn't say approving for dispersment, approving adjustment of the contract amount via the work change order.
So you're saying no?
Well, that's what I hear the board saying is no. Not just me. I just want to clarify that we're all on the same page.
Okay, I, I was not, I was thinking that we had agreed on some of it, but um.
I don't want the words in anybody's mouth.
I think I may have just read too many pages and got my thoughts a little confused. So I ta- I take back what I had said. Um, okay, so. There was an increase of a total of four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars above and beyond the original contract price that the select board will be approving and.
We did approve.
We did approve it and that will be in addition to the balance due.
So his balance due will be X, including that.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we do not have the funds available at this time to provide another installment.
Right.
I mean, we only extended out of the thirty-four, six, thirty-two, ten thousand. So the remaining amount is twenty-four thousand, six, thirty-two.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So would you like to write the letter? Would you like me to write the letter?
Whatever you'd like. I'd be happy to write the letter. Not that I, I'm, I'm not happy to write the letter in one sense, but I, but I, doing my duty as a member of the board, I feel that a letter in writing, I know attorneys were referenced in prior discussions with this from the other side of the fence, so to speak. And I, I just, you know, want to know that he did say whatever, whatever with the select board agreed upon, he un- he would, he would understand and go with.
All right.
Let's just move on.
Yeah, we're not flush with cash right now.
So, so we, we need to get his signature. I'm, I'm wondering, uh.
I was just saying, if you wanted to get the signature, we.
On the work order.
Let's talk. You know what? We don't have to vote on this right now. Stan and I, Sam, you and I will get together, maybe the two of us will.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I, I realize as long as we have the authority of the rest of the board to do what we're doing, that's all that matters to me. I want to be open.
Fine.
Everyone the same page, everyone agree with what we're doing.
We're fine.
Nobody feels left out. We're not being insulting to anybody leaving their mouth.
Okay.
No additional money.
At this time, but we did approve, let's take those changes.
Okay.
And, and good. All right.
We solved this.
Good. All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Sometimes it does get too complicated for me.
So you want to sign this?
Sure.
In the event of, okay, good.
About this time, my brain turns on. Just saying.
It's, how old are you?
I'll be seventy in June.
Okay, gets worse.
You're not supposed to answer.
Right?
She said it very quiet. You know, that's not on the airwaves.
Thank you, Sam. I appreciate that.
As that it gets.
Um. Okay, all right, we're gonna move down to, do you need anything else on here, Sam, that you wanted to um? Oh, the planning committee, because you're, you are the chair of the planning. Did you receive the email from Putney?
Yes, okay.
Same as our next selected meeting.
Okay, so.
The third of January at seven o'clock.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
If we can't manage, we can't do that.
No.
But maybe you could delegate somebody else to, yeah, to, to uh sit in on the filming.
I'll see if someone is interested.
It'll probably be recorded, so you know.
Right, but I think they want it.
Yeah.
Okay, so um.
And I've read it, it's okay with me.
So new business, we did A, which is Marie Tattersall. The town report scheduled due date, I thought I had it and I didn't get it together, so I'm gonna table that.
Okay.
Survey current positions that will be voted at town meeting and.
Oh, yes, and Paul said, Paul already said he'd do it. I had mentioned to Samara that there are, uh, there's a need that I, I've done in the past and it's sort of not hard, but I've got other things going on right now that we need to take a look at the elected list and whose terms are expiring and approach those people to see if they would be running again. Because if not, then we need to provide, we need to start to uh uh coach other people to get involved, let's say, for select board positions. Uh also, there are many appointed positions that are only one year and we like to ask if those people who are currently appointed, if, if reappointed, would they accept it? So that it can, it would make my planning for the meeting in March and April a lot easier because I have to read through and reappoint all tree wardens and uh this and that and the other. So Paul, would you be?
Yeah, so when, when do you use that?
I don't need that until February.
Okay, well, okay.
Yeah.
February, yeah. I'm not gonna coach much between February and third of, whatever. We're not gonna be coaching much between February and January's third or fourth.
You know, the easier it will be for us to, to do that, but I didn't want to say January third again. But let's say January seventeen, how's that?
Okay.
We'll move it up to January.
January seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other item that came in the mail was from Marjorie Ray. She asked us about the selection of the type of email. And one, I know Bruce has a hard time with it, but there's only two formats to use. And one is Gmail format and the other is, I can't think of it. That she sent us. If there's another, another process of uh signing out.
I saw that email, I feel like I did.
So she made it sound like the dot gov was not.
Dot gov, it wasn't the dot gov. It was a Microsoft.
Microsoft Outlook.
Outlook.
You know, we should use, Outlook is so easy to use.
Well, easy.
It's easy.
Another email, though.
And you can actually, you know, right now, Melissa sends all of her stuff through Outlook for new paint.
I learn something new if we had it.
Outlook is so linear, you can't screw it up.
Well, I've had difficulty with it, but I've been willing to switch if everyone, that's what everyone would like to do.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna be flexible.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll do what I, whatever it's. I don't care. I mean, I've gotten used to, we don't care, so whatever people are more comfortable with is fine.
That's what I was thinking.
What should I tell Marjorie?
Spent too much time.
Maybe she should.
Yeah, I don't know. No, well.
What's the announcement?
I don't think we need to know by January third, no. Let me call her up and talk to her.
Yeah.
I'm gonna table it right now until maybe February. Okay, February. Email, okay. Um, we're about to go into reports, if you wanna.
At this point, I'm gonna, I'll just tell you that the, the FEMA, all the labor, all of Mark's labor is summarized. Um, I've been working with Melissa. I gave you a, a sample checklist that I started. Did I give one to Dot? I can't remember.
Did you give me that tonight?
I did, I just, I ge- I think I gave it to you or I meant to give it to you. The forty-seven twenty. You said you could do two things at once and I think I submitted it over your page.
Well, you're trying to prove me a liar, huh? Okay.
I don't know, but I'll, I'll just did it to her. I put everything away and so.
I might have it here.
No, you might not, too. You might and you might.
You can email it, right?
I could email it, but here.
That way you can go home.
Here, you can take a look. What I did is I.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
I did give you one. I made one.
Oh, you do like I do, you take what you got.
Well, I did because it was too small to read. It was too small.
Yes, I got it.
So good. So take a look at it because it's just a start.
Okay.
Because I think that it helps to see things on paper, to know where you're at in these projects.
Oh, this is great.
And you did.
Well, I need numbers in here, that's all.
There are numbers. There are project numbers and there's damage numbers.
Yeah, but I'm, I need the expense.
No, you need the, you need the.
And that's what you're working on.
But that's what, that's what I have finally, I've copied all the invoices and I just need to put them into order.
Thank you.
And really, that PA, the PA notebook that Melissa uses to organize everything are great. So that's how you're gonna be seeing things when they're ready.
And you did all get the six-month extension for all FEMA public assistance category A and B.
We have nothing under category A and B. We have one category D, but it's complete.
I believe it is.
All right, it says it's completed the portal.
Yes.
And so we have category C and you'll see what that checklist asks are like. Do we, what, you know, we can, somebody can start filling in, like, what are we asking for mitigation on and? Um, I looked, took a look in the portal and saw that, you know, something say they're scoping some, some, some things say that EEIs are completely blank, some things say they've been started. Happily, it's not like twenty twenty-one where a million people have put stuff in and we can't figure out, it took me a while to figure out.
But that, that I hope to have. Well, but whenever you get the stuff to me, I'll, the EEIs have done as much as I can.
Yeah, and Melissa is, we're, this Saturday, we are double checking the Putney Mountain work and then twenty twenty-one is done.
Okay.
Officially done.
Okay.
So, yeah, there was a tiny glitch with Patrick getting, being able to amend the costs, but that's fixed now and that's been fixed.
Amazing.
So.
Thank you, thank you.
That's amazing.[1762.44]
It just, I mean, Melissa is amazing. She's really thorough. I'm exhausted.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, uh, we're going to move on to, uh, reports and updates. My raise supervisor, Eric Mark Mills. Don't want to.
You made it through the storm with very minor damage this time around. Uh, there was approximately four culverts that had plugged. Was able to unplug most of them before you think the last there just fifty degrees voted in. And I've already compared the Athens Town Line one, uh, with their town equipment. Let me see, I've been, uh, doing some crushed stone over the soft roads. And today I went out and regraded over bath hole areas and the stone that I laid out. To, uh, hope that it'll freeze into a good shape.
Good.
Um. During the storm, there was one tree that broke by Howard Ozgood's farm, came down on the wires, stopped, called it in. Uh, they came immediately. I was shocked at the.
I told them I was the emergency management director. They had to get here right away.
Fantastic.
I didn't expect it for a day.
Right.
But that was quick response, um.
Must have had your.
The new culverts on Putney Mountain.
I get your dog.
Um, all of the culverts that I monitored throughout the day. Uh, were at full capacity of taking floodwater. And like I say, ninety-nine percent of them, uh, took the water. The low-lying areas did flood, um, and receded and left some debris in new places. The roads themselves made it through without having to be shut down. Um. We had some more signage then stolen. And I have replaced one sign. I looked over the bank in these areas where the signs go missing, just to see if they pulled them up and threw them. And I found a, a, a round, uh, sign post with an aluminum top piece that clamps onto the road sign. And as I was looking it over, I was bringing it back to the shop for storage and I recycled some of them. I noticed that the, uh, the top had been cut off. At first I thought it was a hacksaw, and then if you examine it closer. Um, it's one of these new cutoff discs. They're like four to six inch. They're eight inches, very thin. They cut faster than a hacksaw. And I'm assuming it was a cordless tool. And they trimmed one side right off and the sign fell off and they discarded the post and.
Take their what?
And so it's not like they're after scrap metal.
They're just vandalizing.
Somebody decorating their room with street signs is where I figured.
Yeah.
Amazing.
So, um, another sign is missing as you come off Putney Mountain. I just realized it said to Route thirty. And it pointed, uh, west to Route thirty, so I'll have to call that one in. Um, the clerks have filled their sand shed full. So that both bays of sand are now full and ready for winter. Uh, we're on our second load of salt. The salt bay is two-thirds full, not quite yet, room enough for a third load. Um, I had asked to replenish some of the three-quarter inch stone. That I used during the mud season. So with these warm temperatures and the rain, the roads softened and I ended up, uh, putting a good share of this stockpile that I had. Over soft areas, and so I, I called in for some more stockpile. And. I guess that brings me up to date.
All right, we're hoping we can continue on with this, no more major storms going, going forward.
Yeah, hopefully things freeze and goes to normal winter.
Well, thanks, Marcus. That was good working with you. I think we had a good, met up a couple of times during the Monday.
Yeah, no, it went well, I think, yeah.
Okay, uh, we tabled the B and C, building commissioner, Mr. Mello.
The only thing I want to talk about is the sing-along last weekend. I think we should be noted that Julia Duke did a great job. I mean, that was really good. I have some things I'd like to see changed in it, but basically you can get things moving forward and what they did was, was really good. Um, stuff like outside lighting that you could see the, um, see the parking lot. Because once, they had lights on the building, but you can't see outwards. Um, I think that leaving the door open, letting thirty, thirty-four degree weather into the building was such a hot idea. So I guess what I'm saying is I have my little things that I thought that should be changed. I think they should be done a little earlier instead of, why, instead, instead of having food that's. That's basically in the morning, I call it lard bombs and coffee. First thing in the morning, you should have more like macaroni and cheese, soups, things of that nature, because it's dinner time. There's, I'm a sweetaholic, and I was a no mood to eat donuts and cookies.
You're going to write an email?
Well, I think I'll discuss it with Leanne first, uh, and see what she thinks. Um, but going down.
I know they'll take volunteers for cooking.
You will kind of need a cook? You're asking for trouble. But anyway, I, I just had some little things here and there that I thought would make it, make it better, but all in all, I thought it was a really good endeavor. Um, I hope it's a beginning, like many more stuff like that.
I agree.
We had the summer thing in July and we had this. I think it's a good start. That's all I got to say, basically, I'm doing it right now.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Um. Uh, Stan, you want to, we have a contract. Stan, I'll let you, um, you're next.
Yeah, the, the, the contract that we, uh, had with, uh, Two Wired Guys was very, very, very basic. It, it actually didn't state a dollar amount. Doesn't state repayment terms, anything like that, and it just says, uh, for services to be provided, computer services period. And, uh, guy was kind enough to send along, uh, a little more descriptive, uh, item. That I included in the new contract that I may have sent everybody a copy of as addendum B. And, uh, and then there's, uh, if you log on currently, uh, you will see, uh, service agreement. And it indicates some basic stuff that they get involved with, uh, in terms of what they will do and won't do. And so I, I've copied that and then built it into the contract that I, I am suggesting as addendum A. Uh, and, uh, and then basically, uh. Have included, as you note, uh, two, two areas which I put in yellow. Uh, not Article One, services provided. I've added computer services conducted by internet connection and/or equipment drop off. At the service location on Grassy Brook Road, Brooklyn. Uh, and, and they have not really defined other than very general terms. So I've said services have not been defined by the contractor, uh, other than addendum A and addendum B. And then under compensation and billing, I inserted the following. Compensation for the above services will be paid in, uh, in accordance with email suggestion of contractor. In the amount of twelve hundred and fifty dollars and approved by the municipality select board. Any work or services either individually or aggregate exceeding twelve fifty will be agreed to in writing by both parties. And I inserted that because they've suggested twelve fifty. And I thought for the purposes of the, of the town, that if it's more than that, we must enter into something agreeing to that fact, whatever it is. Um, and I asked, uh, if they would come to the town office to fix equipment. They didn't answer. And when I looked at it again, I noticed that they, he said in an earlier email. That the options are they will connect over the internet. Uh, and work on equipment that way, or you can drop off at their offices. They just don't offer onsite work on the computers. So, um, this appears to be, it looks to me like a compromise of sorts. It's including everything they have on their site and what they've sent us in the past. And at the same time, taking into consideration their, their suggested dollar amount of twelve fifty.
Um, my question now is proper protocol. I know we've approved there as a vendor. Do I need to put that we're signing a contract on the next agenda?
Uh, I would assume so if it's not listed as a, as a signing. Uh, for this, because there's no action. We can't take action that we, that we, uh, haven't, haven't listed. So I've let them know that we'll be, we'll be, um, notifying them. That the prior contract that was signed by the representative, Mrs. Mio. Will be voided and that we'll be offering them a second, another contract.
Okay.
Um, so.
All right.
On the next agenda.
All right.
I'll just let her know that it's coming.
Okay, perfect. Anything else, Sam?
Yes, uh, I will update the, the, uh, grants log to indicate that grant number. G I A zero zero two seventy-four is now closed out. I haven't done that yet. Uh, and then, uh, at the last select board meeting, I had, we specifically asked. Uh, Mr. Clark if he would be interested in doing any kind of estimate work. Uh, I then went to, to CFR, such and such, it's the, it's the federal register. Item that's referenced in all the FEMA work as to what's required and not required. And the only party that they allow to do those kinds of things is someone who's certified and licensed to do it. So I don't believe Archie is certified and had taken any courses, so that's not an option for us. I've called the town administrator of Jamaica, who has a lot of work that needs to be done. And left a voicemail this afternoon in the like three-thirty quarter for asking him who they use. And how fast it is, are they happy with them, et cetera.
That's a good idea, yeah.
So, uh, hopefully I'll have more to add to that. Um, and I had some issues with stuff that I had loaded in that seemed to end up in the wrong place. Uh, I called the help desk at FEMA and gotten, found out how to change that. Uh, and because I have not heard anything back from our primary person. I probably will call the secondary person tomorrow and say, this is where we're at. Um, should we be applying for a extension for any of this for? Forty-seven twenty, well, that's an automatic one, but we've got five or six others.
Okay.
That we need to decide what we're going to do, do about it.
Okay.
In terms of not only what is, I mean, one of the reasons it's not done is because I don't know which of the options for the mitigation. Each mitigation hydraulic study has three options. What does the select board want to do?
I haven't studied the, I have to study those.
Yeah, we all need to do.
The hydraulic studies.
So unless you're, you're abstaining from voting, you need to put the time in to look at what.
I don't have the time. I'm abstaining.
Okay.
I don't want to be, I gotta go to bed.
I know what you mean. I feel pushed doing what I'm doing, but.
All right, well, we'll have to wait because we won't have a forum.
Okay, okay. So, um, at some point, we need to come to a conclusion. I mean, they're looking for me to identify what it is specifically in terms of square yards and material, cubic yards of material, et cetera. And I, and I don't have that knowledge or, uh, expertise. I'm going to submit what, what she sends me.
If.
Tomorrow.
If. The, if they won't accept someone like A S Clark to give us an estimate, how can you be more?
Oh, I know I can. So I'm not.
I think we're going to need the extension for sure.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm sensing.
And because we were waiting on a hydraulic study, nothing was performed, so they need to know that.
All the emergency stuff, yes. We've done it. We've completed the job.
Yeah.
But I don't have the dimensions. Hopefully, from what Samara's going to give me, it'll have your hours, the cubic yards of base, rough base line. Uh, and I can answer some of those questions.
Right.
And, and we might have some that we won't need extensions. We will have some we probably will need extensions.
Okay.
And I'm, and I got to tell you, I went fab, because I'm scared. I really am scared about this. Their, their rules and regulations say they don't care if you're, they, they do care if you're late. And if it's not for good reason, and it's because you simply couldn't get to it, that's not an explanation that they will accept. And that part is scary. That's one of the reasons I want to call the second person in command for them. Because I'm seeing stuff that says they're not, they may not even be bothering to respond. Assuming this guy is in fact away on a vacation. The alternative thought is because we can't make a claim. Because we haven't done what we're supposed to do in a timeframe that we want.
So let's, you, you're saying Samara and you are going to collaborate on something sooner than later.
Well, yeah, to hopefully tomorrow, maybe Friday.
Okay.
So I'll know more then.
Okay.
Are, are you, are we talking twenty twenty-three damage?
Yeah.
Okay. Right.
Yeah.
So basically, they wanted to see it all put back, grieved, blood and done by now.
Yes.
And if there's going to be.
Like Ellen Ware Road. That's technically by their rules shouldn't, should have been done and we should have given them the cost, et cetera, for doing that. So it's scary, you know, I, I don't know how deadline-y they were or how demanding they were on forty-six twenty-one. But, you know, and maybe they're not.
We were in COVID and they knew it and there was not the vendors available, so they were flexible in that respect. And I will have to say that that storm happened in what, July, that summer, twenty twenty-one? They did not do a site inspection until June twenty twenty-two.
Ah.
Okay, so we had our site inspection within three weeks this year.
Yes.
They did not do it until June, you know, eleven months later.
Okay.
So that was the difference.
Yeah, and then I'm, and I, and as I said to my email, and I won't get into this other stuff.
Okay.
But, but thank you for your patience and I'll do the best I can.
Okay. Uh, my select board report is pretty straightforward. I already covered it. My questions about the cement, the cement floor, the rainy day fund, matching grants. Equipment replacement and, uh, just situational setup. I, I just will say that when we have the storm, I don't mind using the emergency management title to call the, the companies up and say, you know, we have an accident or. Problem here to get the crew down and help us, uh, and checking on people. But, uh, as far as, you know, being able to go and estimate things, like I said, it, that, that, and opening up a, uh, emergency operations center. Uh, we, we didn't, that would be something we have to talk about in the future. Okay, are there any other topics requested for anybody? No. All right, so the email, pretty much everybody got shared that the planning commissioner for Putney Town Plan is next week or, uh, not next week. January third, um, at, at the same time as our meeting. As far as our agenda, the contract for, the signing of the contract for Two Wired Guys. Discussion, set aside time to discuss the M T A P priority list. Discuss the salary guide development. Review the extension needs for FEMA. I think you just said that. We need to talk, we're going to talk about the rainy day fund policy. The due dates for the town report. We do still have to talk about the animal control, police, regional policing programs. Uh, which I didn't mention earlier.
I think what I received last year was the selectmen's report, the auditor's report. And if there's any other report from anyone else that I, that you sent to me, that I then included in the other parts of it. The appropriations, et cetera. Do you want, who's going to do the town report this year other than, uh, no, David's going to do the, set up the printing. But are we going to go through the same basic processes last year?
I'll sit with you. I'm not going, I'll be around. I'm staying with my sister at my house, so I can sit down with you and we can fit that all together.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, so that's our agenda. Nothing else. I'm going to adjourn this evening's meeting at nine oh three P M.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.